I should be able to unmute yourselves.
Okay, so Alder Carter is present. Alder Abbas.
Present.
Alder Harrington McKinney.
Present.
I don't want to say I'm deaf, but I'm not hearing anything from anybody.
Uh oh.
President Carter, if you go to the bottom left-hand corner of your screen, click on the microphone, there's a little carrot there. If you want to, there's like a menu that pops up if you go to select speaker. You can select maybe same as system, or if you have.
Alder Abbas, can you take over?
Yes, I can.
She can't hear me. I don't know why I ran through that.
Alder Skidmore.
Here.
Alder Hennick.
Present.
Alder Tierney. Alder Campbell.
Here.
Alder Bedar. Alder Bedar is absent. And we have Quorum.
He will be here in five minutes. He's running five minutes.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Thanks, Lisa. Next is on agenda item approval of minutes. Can I have a motion, please?
Move approval.
Need a second. Second, Alder Skidmore, thanks for the second. Any question on the minutes? I do not see any hand raised, so it's approved. Next is disclosure and recusal. Any disclosure or recusal from any member of the committee? I do not see any hand raised for that. So next is item number four, public comments.
I'm back.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Did you do the, Stefan was able to do the protocol?
Oh, no.
I can run through that real quick. Welcome to our virtual meeting. If you lose connection at any point during the meeting, you can reconnect by clicking the link or calling the number in your original email. Members of the committee, if you're able, please activate your video and keep it on for the duration of the meeting. Staff, if you're able, please activate your video when you're speaking. Please use the raise hand feature when you'd like to be recognized to speak, ask questions, or request a roll call vote. Staff, please use the raise hand feature when you're asked a question. In this meeting, panelists can unmute themselves. The chair will do their best to call on committee members in the order in which hands are raised. Lowering your hand will take you out of the queue. Members of the public who have registered to speak, the name you entered in Zoom must match the name you entered in registration. You will remain muted until called upon. The clerk or the clerk or chair will tell you when your time is up. After speaking, a member of the body may ask you a question. If you need to share documentation with the committee, please send it to the email listed on today's agenda. President Carter, back to you.
Okay, thank you. Item four, public comment.
Yes, Alder Carter, we have three registrations on item number six, the 311 report. Two not wishing to speak and one person available to answer questions. We have one registrant on agenda item number seven, the PFAS update, with someone wishing to speak. And we have 18 speakers on agenda item number nine, the Zaire Road Homeless Shelter.
Okay, thank you. And, excuse me, Lisa, does anyone want to speak now, or can they wait until the item's called?
They can wait until the item is called. I do not have anybody specifically registered for public comment.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item number five. And who is here to speak on that?
Byron Bishop.
Hi Byron, go for it.
Alder Carter, excuse me, just one second, I raised my hand.
Oh, I didn't see your hand up. I'm sorry.
No worries, President Carter. I would like to do a motion to refer the item number nine to tonight's common council meeting without any recommendation. And if I get second, I can speak to that.
Do we have a second? Alder McKinney is seconding.
Thank you very much. As Lisa mentioned, we have over 18, 19 public commands and agenda item. We have nine agenda items right now, and the meeting is only one and a half hour. So I'm not sure if we can able to discuss, and as we're going to discuss this on common council floor, so I was thinking it's appropriate motion to move this to further discussion at common council without recommendation, and I will appreciate if my colleague support this and people who registered. I will encourage them to register for common council meeting to speak. So that's my motion is, thanks.
Alder Balde.
Thank you, President Carter. So I would say if, for some reason, obviously, we have about 20 people who are registered to speak to the item. I understand that every member of the CCC is also a member of the council. So I personally would have not much of a problem referring it. The only problem I would have is without a statement that how you are leaning, but that too can pass. But the people who took time to come and speak here, instead of registering again, are you guys able to send that list to maybe President Carter and the mayor to make so that at least, you know, they can speak without going again online and trying to register? Is that a possibility, assuming that, you know, your motion will pass to refer to council?
And who can answer that question?
So I would suggest possibly Attorney Haas, I believe. He made a decision on that earlier today.
Is Attorney Haas on? Oh, there you are.
Yes, thank you, President Carter. I don't know that I made the decision because I'm not sure it's up to me, but my understanding, and the IT folks can correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is we cannot simply transfer registrants from this meeting to the council meeting. If they would want to speak at the council meeting, they would need to re-register. And certainly if it's not going to be taken up at this meeting, you know, they would have time to get registered for the council meeting. I would assume the IT staff could provide all the council members with the list of registrants from this meeting and how they're registered, so if they do not appear at the council meeting, at least the council would have the list of who registered during this meeting.
Yes, we can certainly provide that list.
So on that note, can I ask that then, because this is not their fault, they came to speak here, now they are told that this item is going to be spoken at the council. Can staff do the work, look at who is registered for council, cross-check that with who is registered here? And let me know, all the president and the mayor know that these are the people who were registered to speak here, but who are not registered to speak at the council. So I can talk to them or work with them and make sure that they are able to express what they are feeling, whether they are for it or against it.
Was that a question to Attorney Haas or to Stefan?
So that is a direction that I think can come from the council president to say, look, cross-check this and then send the list to you and the mayor. And then I, you can share that list with me if you want, but if there are people who are not registered for the council meeting, but they are registered to speak here, I think those people should be given the opportunity to speak, and you can make that decision. I don't think there's any legal reason why you cannot make that decision.
Okay, thank you. Alder Harrington McKinney.
I just wanted to clarify, is there, with this discussion, is there a possibility that someone might not get registered and get overlooked and will not be allowed to speak at the council meeting? That's, that's one of the things I, I'm hoping that we're able to guarantee that. Because if they did take the time to register, and we're taking up time now discussing this. I just want to make sure that everybody who wants to speak has the opportunity to speak either here or at the council meeting. And so is there a guarantee for that? And I request.
So that's what I'm trying to make so happen, so.
Okay. I believe that Alder Abbas and myself have the list of registrants, correct Stefan?
That's correct, and I can send a list to Alders too.
Okay.
I'm going to do that right now.
Okay, thank you. Alder Abbas and then Harrington McKinney.
Oh, no, my hands, let me lower my hand, sorry.
Alder Abbas.
Yeah, so with my motion, I think so it's a reasonable advice from Alder Balde. If the IT staff can look into registered participant from CCCC and registered participants for common council and those who are missed, send those name to Alder Balde and President Carter and as well as the mayor. So we try to make sure they get registered for common council then. So I will add that language to the motion as well. Thanks.
Okay, so the motion has been moved and seconded. If there are no objections, I will record a unanimous vote. If there are objections, please raise your raised hand feature. I do not see any objections, so we will record a unanimous vote. Thank you, Alder Balde. And Byron, thank you for your patience. And now we're ready for your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to speak before you all. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Byron Bishop. I'm the Equal Opportunities Division Manager for the Department of Civil Rights, and each year I'm required by ordinance to share, give you an overview of what's been happening for the previous year for the Equal Opportunities Division. My plan typically is to try to have these reports to you all by February of every year. I'm going to just do some scheduling this year. I was unable to do that, which is why you're seeing me now. But I'm glad to be able to share this information with you. I believe you all were sent copies of the reports. I have two reports to share with you. Usually it's only one, but the second one is a trend analysis, which I think is quite interesting. But the first one I'd like to go over is the 2020 Annual Report. And I tried to put it in a format, so it just summarizes and highlights the things that might be very important to you to know instead of putting things in long narrative form. The first quadrant on the upper left of that report says caseload, and it talks about the types of complaints that we received and the total perfected complaints that came in. Last year during the COVID year, it was very interesting to see the numbers that were coming in, and we've noticed that we received 106 discrimination complaints that came in. 18 of those complaints were transferred to this Equal Rights Division in the state of Wisconsin to investigate. One of the things I want to share with you all and let you all become aware of is that the Equal Rights Division last year received and investigated 106 complaints that were in the city of Madison's jurisdiction. And this, if we were to investigate those complaints, it would have doubled the investigative opportunity for us in, and our residents in the city of Madison. So I just wanted to share that with you because the cases in our jurisdiction, when they're open, this could have resulted in a missed opportunity of some revenue financially for us into the city as well. So one of the things that we're going to be doing is working with the state of Wisconsin in a work sharing agreement that needs to be updated, where we hope to have very strong conversations about making the process be a little bit more smoother and discuss about the cases that we share with them versus the ones that we feel they could be sharing with us that are within our jurisdiction. The second quadrant in the middle talks about the number of complaints investigated by the Equal Opportunities Division. And this is very interesting because you see the breakdown of the pie in the center. Where 63% of the cases we investigated were employment-related, 15% were housing, and 21% were public accommodations. What I note here is that in the previous years, the public accommodations usually is lower than housing. But in the COVID year, I believe the housing cases were lowered due to some of the moratoriums that we had out there. And I think the public accommodations has increased because some of the complaints that people were receiving because of COVID. So it'll be interesting to see what happens after this year, when we start getting people back out. I believe the housing complaints will increase, no matter what. We're already starting to see a little bubble of increase on that already, and I'm expecting to see a lot more complaints of housing related in our community coming up very closely. The quadrant on the bottom left, our cases closed. And 36% of those cases that were closed resulted in a $232,000 plus settlement awards that went to residents in our community that were being harmed in some way by discrimination. And I'd like to share that number because I think it's something that you all should know, how are people getting helped in other ways than other, the education and training. The case outcomes kind of speaks for itself, except what I want to pay attention to there is the top allegations. Number one allegation complaint for the year was race, followed by disability, followed by conviction record, followed by sex were our top four complaints for the year. Race tends to be the number one complaint historically, and has been probably for at least the last decade. So there's still a lot of work that we can do in that area. With training and outreach, even though it was a COVID year, we still were able to provide a smaller scale of training and outreach to our community, where we had 36 total trainings that we were able to provide, 14 outreaches we were still able to do. Obviously, everything that we did was virtual or up until COVID hit early on. But we're still working in that, in all year last year, with having 335 total participants in these training and outreach events. Our Certified Community Partners Program, which is a very successful program that we do, which partners with people in the community that are working with folks in employment or housing discrimination issues and working with those individuals if they feel they may have been discriminated against in our community, and helping those individuals fill out a complaint form and get those complaints to us in a faster capacity. So we still intend to continue to work on getting more people connected through that program. Last year, we were only able to add seven more individuals to that program because of COVID, but we are going to be picking back up that this year because every two years, this is a recertification that we do for people in the community because things change so often, and our processes and systems and programs. Every two years, we want to make sure everybody's getting the most latest, greatest, fresh information in our community. In the middle there, you can see some of the folks that we provided training, education, and outreach to. The City of Milwaukee's Equal Rights Commission, UW Madison, the State of Wisconsin, Office of Attorney General, Madison College, and some of the social development commissions are just some folks that we like to highlight to individuals of the training and education that we've created. Some highlights for accomplishments of things that I think you all should be aware of is that we created the Building Inspections Collaborative Housing Retaliation Discrimination Partner and Partnership. What that means is, is that Building Inspections has a part of their ordinance that allows protections for people in our community that if someone were to call Building Inspections and complain to about their landlord and they're not having, having substandards or living conditions, or whatever it might be, there's a protection for them that says that they can't be evicted and placed out of their home for six months. And so what we wanted to do is Building Inspections did not have a plan to, in a way to investigate these types of complaints that may come through, but we do. And they didn't have a process that allows people to, to get help if they've been harmed, and we do. So what we tried to do is come up with a way to share information and collaborate together, so when individuals feel that they may be harmed and their landlord or building owners are retaliating against them in this way, they now have a way where they can reach out to us and get some help and be protected. So that was part one of that relationship. There is going to be a second part of that relationship that we have to look at, which we'll work on, maybe changing and mirroring the ordinance to ours in some way and having a direct more relationship with that. One of the things that we also did is we initiated a mediation program with the Madison Police Department, which that got placed on hold due to COVID and then, and with the new chief coming in. So, but the Department of Civil Rights and the Madison Police Department were in a place where they wanted to come up with a way to have a mediation program where people in the community, they felt they were harmed, there would be an avenue for folks to come to the table and try to resolve conflict in a peaceful manner. So we hope to be able to follow that program more this year and get it up and running. I'm excited to get that back into play. We also worked with the state legislators at the Capitol and were very instrumental in helping a mom family in our community. We had a big immigration issue in our community, and they've been, they were being harmed for over 10 years where they had spent all of their family's resources, they spent all of their family's savings and to trying to deal with this issue of discrimination. Now, even though this issue, immigration, is outside the scope of the Department of Civil Rights in Madison, they asked me to take a look at this situation for them and to see if there were some things that we could help. So I was able to do that. I was able to determine and write a letter to our state legislators at the Capitol and able to write the federal government and tell them that I felt that there were some areas that may have been overlooked, that they might want to take another look at that caused some discrimination for this family that has been suffering for 10 years. And long story short is that their immigration issue was satisfied, and they no longer have an issue, and they were actually able to obtain all of the support and things that they were needed to get. And so we were very instrumental in helping that happen. We also are implementing a new case tracking system software from a company called SciCom. It's a city law program, and basically this program will replace the current program that we have that's over 40 years old. And so this will be a huge historic marker for the city because this program soon will be launched out to the community, letting the community know that they can reach us and file a complaint in a very easy manner from whether they're at their computer, their laptop, their cellphone, their tablet in five different languages, and those languages will be able to come to us and they'll be able to fill out that complaint form in their language of choice, and we were able to take that complaint in. And if it's a qualified complaint, we'll be able to start the investigative process. This is something that we've been working on for a while, and I'm excited to be able to roll this out to our community and our residents and as a way for them to access us in a more easier way. So the last thing I'll highlight is, we also have been able to reestablish our injunctive relief process for residents that are being harmed in housing. There's some restrictions in that area that we've been given by the city attorney's office as to what would qualify a person for that process. But that process has been in our ordinance for a very long time. We just have not been able to utilize it and create a structure and a process. But now that structure and that process is in place, and so there is now a tool that is available should something come up our way where we're able to answer to that. In the next report, on the trend analysis report, this is looking at the past five years of information showing what has happened. And so if you look at the caseloads, a lot of these things are very self-explanatory, quick little snapshots of what's been happening. And these are our cases, the complaints that have come in for discrimination to the city in the Equal Opportunities Division. In 2020, you see the numbers that we had at 106, they mirror the numbers we just talked about. But this also shows you what has happened going back to 2016. If there is no green bar, then there was no information available to me in 2016. So I went back as far as I could before we started keeping records, and now we're starting to really get a good picture and a good look on what's happening in our community. You can see the investigations quadrant on the upper right of that talks about the complaints investigated, cases that were closed. The bottom of that talks about the settlements. You can see the differences. And one of the questions that you might have is, why in 2019 did it drop and spike so low down to $117,000 in settlements? A part of that is, we didn't have any hearings of that year that added to those settlements. And the reason why we didn't have any hearings that year is because a lot of those cases that would have gone to hearing were actually settled in the mediation or the conciliation process. So that's what was exciting. And if you look in 2020, the number spiked back up. I can tell you that almost 90% of that number are settlements from mediations and conciliations, and a very small part is from hearings. So the new processes that have been put in place are working and working the way that we envisioned them to work, minimizing the amount of cases that are actually going to that hearing level. On the backside, or the next page, is the top allegations is identified. This historically is the top four historically for the last five years, race still being number one. But retaliation is moving up, and moving up rather quickly in the past few years. The numbers for the trainings and the outreaches and the education programs, you see the total trainings that are provided for the years, total outreaches that were done. The difference between an outreach and a training, if you're interested, the trainings are things that we specifically provide education to the community and/or respondents within the community. And outreaches are actual events that we go to to provide information and do an information sharing event. The bottom quadrant talks about the total training participants. When I first was hired with the city, the Department of Civil Rights and Equal Top Opportunities Division, we were doing an average of 11 trainings and outreaches a year for a total of less than 100 people. So I'm pleased to see that, as you can see, going back from 2017, and we're spiking all the way up, and in 2019, we spiked to 1,900 people that have been reached by our training and our outreaches throughout the community. And then COVID hit, so then we dropped back down to the 300s, but I'm pretty confident we're going to, 2021 through 2022, we're going to jump back up and pick back up where we are. Those are the presentations of the things that I have to discuss and share. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer those questions.
Are there any questions for Byron? Alder Campbell.
Yeah, thank you so much Byron for your presentation and just your work in general, leading this division. Just the last four years have been, you know, major, major developments and major benefits for the people of this city, and I really appreciate your leadership there. And I miss working with you since I'm not on EOC anymore. But I was just wondering if you could talk to us a little bit about what is planned for Phase Two of your work with building inspection? You mentioned the Phase One, which is huge. It's just, it's huge. And that, and combined with the trainings of community partners to help folks understand that that's available to them is really big. So can you talk about what the next phase is?
Sure, I can tell you that this is going to be off the cuff because nobody other than me right now knows what I'm thinking of what Phase Two might look like. So if anybody's on this, just understand this is just how I'm envisioning this to happen. One of the things that I'm going to be addressing with the EEOC and the EOC are ways that we can look at expanding our retaliation protection under our existing ordinance. And what that might look like is, is that would create an expansive expansion authority with building inspections and maybe public health as well. And how I envision that is looking at areas in the ordinances that, in which they have, looking at our ordinance on the retaliation piece and seeing if there's ways that we can align our roles and responsibilities, what we do with investigative work and offering remedies for folks who've been found probable for retaliating folks, especially in the areas of housing, where we can marry some of these ordinances and the language together to give ourselves some of that expanded authority. And it might just, in my mind, it's a matter of taking a look at what pieces of the ordinances may need to be added or rewritten, have somebody do it and then present it for approval. So, but I want to understand a little bit more and looking at the federal government and how they've been utilizing the expansion of the retaliation piece, especially in the areas of housing right now. They have a lot of information and things that they're doing right now. So, I'm doing some research on that piece first. And then, probably will be putting a team together to look at what would that mean for us, for the city, to protect residents that are being harmed under the retaliatory protective class?
Great, well, keep Alders in the loop with that. I know there's a number of us who are really, really keen on improving tenant protections where we can. So, I mean, I'll say for myself, I'm ready to help working on that.
Thank you.
Alder Carter, President Carter, you're muted.
Thank you very much. We will go on to Item Six. And that is the feasibility findings. Is David with us? There you are, David.
And Sarah Edgerton as well.
Hi Sarah, I see you now.
Hi Alder Carter. There I am. Okay, I'm gonna share my screen.
Go ahead.
President Carter, Alder Baldi hand his waist.
Oh, I'm sorry, Alder Baldi.
Thank you, President Carter. I just wanted you to let those who are waiting in the room who signed up for the main cell that will know that, you know, I'm getting messages that they're still expecting to talk, just to let them know that they will not be testifying. So, they should try and, you know, log in at 6:30 for council meeting, please. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So, if you're registered, real quickly, if you're registered to speak on the homeless shelter, you should register for the common council meeting. That is where you will be speaking. So, please do that. And can someone send them the link to that if we have their email address? Thank you.
I'll just chime in real quick. So, we've identified five people who have not yet registered for the common council meeting, but were registered for CCEC. We're reaching out to them via email to send them the link. Everyone else is registered.
Okay, thank you very much, Stefan. Sarah, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, President Carter. So, good afternoon, Common Council Executive Committee. I'm here with Dave Faust, who's our Applications and Development Manager. And we're going to speak about the Madison 311 feasibility report findings and then the next steps. So, to give you a little background on the report, the purpose was to discover about what the feasibility would be for developing a 311 CRM system to serve residents and businesses in the city of Madison. This report was done in 2019. They submitted their final ICMA, who is who we consulted with, finished the report at the beginning of 2020. And Dave and I then began our work, but then the pandemic hit. And so, this was put on hold as we responded to everything that IT needed to do to support everybody through the pandemic with services. So, staff that were interviewed represented a variety of service request types. This included building inspection. And we did administrative clerks up to the Director of Building Inspection, Common Counsel, we did the Chief of Staff, and then Staff Karen was interviewed. And then Engineering, we did again that same array of administrative clerk up to the Director, Rob Phillips. Kara Kradowitz from Performance Excellence and Data Management was interviewed. IT was interviewed. Staff that work on the web team and SLA and City Works and then myself. Metro was interviewed, their customer service and marketing representative manager. And then from Parks, we had Forestry, the Superintendent and Assistant Superintendent, and then an administrative clerk that takes the front desk phone calls. From Streets and Recycling, we had Charlie Remines, the Director. And then from Transportation, we had Tom Lynch, as well as staff from Traffic Engineering and Parking Utility. And then from Water Utility, we had Customer Service Representation and a supervisor from the customer service team, as well as the manager of the Water Utility Asset Management System. Then we also interviewed Dane County 911 Center staff and United Way 211 staff. And the reason why we were interviewing them was to find out what services and what calls that they get that really align more towards a 311 rather than a 911 and a 211. So, we interviewed the previous Director of Dane County 911 and some of his staff and then United Way 211 staff. And then, any regional considerations, talking to Dane County or any of the other local municipalities and townships or outside the scope of this study? So, what did we discover? Well, from feedback from city staff, as they were talking through the different services that were provided through reporter problem, through email forms, through people calling on the phone, is that providing everyone access is not only easy access, but needs to be equal access to city government. And that we don't have that right now. That we need to make sure that we're reporting and tracking issues. So, if you call or you submit a reporter problem currently, you don't get a tracking number. This is a system that is a one-way system rather than a two-way system. But we need to be able to provide multiple channels of engagements for residents. We need to not only have it that they need to go to the website or that they need to call. They should be able to text, they should be able to have an app. They should be able to use social media. There has to be many different ways for us to be getting the services delivery that we need to our residents. And then we need to offer tools to navigate City Hall. We are a large city in terms of how many agencies we have. If you were to call because there is something wrong with your street and you go to Streets and Recycling, that's the wrong, that's the wrong agency. You actually need to be calling Engineering. And so, you know, oftentimes, residents are sent on a phone, you know, call where they're forwarded from one to the next as we try to serve them and to make sure that they're getting what they need. We also need to be capturing data for measuring performance excellence. We're not doing that right now. We don't know how long it takes for a service request to get completed. We don't know how many service requests we're getting sometimes because of the different avenues that we have people reporting. And then we can use 311 as a forecast engine. If you start getting phone calls or service requests that are coming through through the different multiple channels that we would like to offer and residents can actually report that there's an issue, all of a sudden, we can start seeing like if there is something on a street that is continually occurring, that perhaps there's property maintenance issue and that we need to be reaching out to a landlord to work with them on getting that property fixed. This can help us to start seeing where perhaps a neighborhood needs to have more funding and needs to have better services in that neighborhood. If we have something like a forecast engine that we would be able to use that would come off of a 311 because of measuring the different services. And then we gain resident satisfaction. When a resident knows that when they put something in, that they have a tracking number and that they can come back in and they can actually see where their service request is, that's going to make them feel like they're being heard and that they are getting their service requests completed. There's also, you know, accountability. There's no tracking number for a residence, as I spoke before in the previous slide, no measurement of time. There's not a way to see if the same issue's been reported. So, if a sidewalk hasn't been cleared after a snowstorm, we can, you know, currently, a resident can put in a complaint and they don't know if their neighbors have also put it in. But if they go and they're able to see, oh, this is also, this has already been reported, I'm just going to add to this one rather than creating another one. That creates efficiencies for staff as well as for residents. We're not going to have disparity in service delivery because it's one way to come in. You don't need to know who the person is. You don't need to know how the city works. You're going through one, one channel, one way, one access point. This will address language barriers. We'd have this in multiple languages. We would have language access assistance set up so that we would be able to make sure that we are responding to all of our phone calls and all of our requests. ICMA identified other benefits. Reduced the frustration of residents due to misdirected calls. Reducing city leaders' workloads. Now, this is one that I hear from common counsel often, is that you get many phone calls, you get many emails, you get many different ways that people are asking you to help with a service issue that they have going on or just an issue in general with the city. And that you spend the time to figure out what agency it needs to go to and following up to make sure that this gets completed. Having a 311 would help to reduce those workloads. This can, as I said previously, it will be an equalizer in service delivery among city neighborhoods. This creates efficiencies for both residents and city staff. And it's also an opportunity for us to educate the public on city processes and how they would work. So, the, another component of a 311 is a knowledge base. So, that when residents come and they're going to put in a service request to report an issue, they can also do a search and see if there is already basically like a frequently asked question on that service. And they can then figure out, okay, this is already being addressed. This is how they're taking care of it and I can move forward. And if I need to, I can actually add on to whatever that service request is if I want to. Or I can see that this has been taken care of as part of that knowledge base. It also gives us an opportunity to do back and forth communications. So, right now with the reporter problem, we get it. Then there's emails perhaps back and forth. But we can, at the end of a service request through a 311, we can say, did this meet the needs of your request? Do you have additional questions? Would you like to respond to something else? So, we can start reaching back out and providing that back and forth feedback that we need to get from residents rather than this one way, it would not be two-way. So, the idea is that this is a central port of entry into city services. And this is beneficial to residents. It's less intimidating, it makes city services more accessible, equitable, and requires less work on the part of residents to find answers to questions. We ask them now to understand how our city works to get the answers and to get the services that they need. So, what is the current state from the ICMA report? So, ICMA and the city staff identified that there's already the software infrastructure in place. Now, it's getting all of our agencies to use this infrastructure. So, we have City Works, which is our asset management system. And right now, it's currently just used internally for tracking maintenance conducted on public infrastructure. We have SLA, which is our permitting and licensing system. This is used for resident and business permitting. So, this is both internal and external. And then we have Tyler, which is our financial system, which is the backbone, not only just to do the payment processing, but to admit all of our financial services. And this is, we are in the process of making this both accessible to residents as well as as an internal tool. And these are the systems that would help to support the infrastructure of a 311 CMR system. And the 311 would sit on top of these systems and would speak to each one of them. And there would be this back and forth communication going on. But what's even more important, and I think needs to be highlighted, is that during, during the pandemic, we really started to, as a city, work as teams. So, we are now really identifying these practices and using performance excellence for the work that we do. And so, instead of our agencies being so siloed in our work, we're really starting to work across the agencies to work together to get movement on different projects and different services. And that 311 would just continue to break down those silos and to have cross-enterprise, cross-agency work, cross-departmental work. And this is all part of those key services of key identifiers of performance excellence. And this is, this is a huge piece that we've already overcome during the pandemic. So, what are the next steps? So, ICMA recommendations. They feel that we need to have a project organization structure as kind of the key success for making sure that this is going to work. They feel that we need to develop appropriate structure and communication channels, that we need to place this project at the highest level of visibility within the city's organization. And we need to have executive sponsorship and that we get the authority to make decisions across organizational boundaries. And we need to develop a top implementation team. That's really important to have a very strong implementation team that can help move this through and to help break down the barriers that are going to probably occur as we move through a 311 implementation. So, as part of these next steps, we need to develop a roadmap. We need to determine the scope of services that we're going to offer and identify the phases of this implementation. We need to identify what kind of staffing model are we going to have? Are we going to staff to average? That means that we are, you know, working, we have a system that's about five days a week, six to 5:00 PM, 6:00 AM to 5:00 PM as part of those days and hours of service. We need to identify a technology model and we need to identify a facility model. And then the other big piece is identifying those service silos and conflicting processes and systems. So, we need to, and we have been working on that in IT, collaborating with all of our partner agencies on this. Through the pandemic, there was a very big push to move a lot of our paper processes. When I say paper processes, most of them are PDF forms that are on the website. And moving those to automated digital workflows. And oftentimes, using the SLA as part of that. We also need to look at agency-based processes that should be incorporated into enterprise-wide software systems. And we need to help to identify these duplicative services. We have services that agencies might be doing one piece of or part of and making sure that agencies are working together so that it's just one continuous flow. And there's so much more as part of that. And then we need to determine the operations of a 311. Is it centrally located or is it agency-centric? What is the staffing? Would we hire first? ICMA recommends that we do a contact center manager and a project manager even before there is a 311. And the reason why is that we need to have this contact center manager to oversee the implementation. And then we need to determine what the hours and days of service are. You notice I've done this twice because that's so important, figuring out what the hours and days of service are going to be. And then the location, where is this going to be? Is it within the current city structure? Has this become a new agency? And then, the estimated project cost. So, there are going to be capital costs. Those capital costs would be more around the purchasing of the software and then probably hiring a consultant to help with that. I didn't discuss that. I didn't bring that into this presentation. What I want to really focus on are the annual operating costs. So these are 2019 annualized operating costs. But the personnel is at about $2 million. And then there's the additional phone costs, facilities, and then the software licensing and the cost of hardware, all coming in at over $2,617,000 a year. So the really big piece here with the 311 is that cities have implemented 311 systems and found that this to be a great equalizer for residents to contact city. And this is key, that this can be anonymous. It's easily reachable by anyone and it removes a barrier of interacting with government because a resident does not know who to contact or how the system works. It's taking the mystery out of government and giving the access to residents so that they can get the services they need.
Are there any questions for Sarah or David? Alder Abbas and after you, Alder Kimball.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Sarah, for the great presentation. It's really appreciate that. I really like this, you know, 311 concept. And I think so that will really help the city to move forward and keep the equity in it. So this operational cost you mentioned, this is for 5:00 AM, 6:00 AM till 5:00 PM. This is part-time, like, could you explain a little more about the operational cost? Is it for the whole program?
So it is the ICMA, the operating cost model that they went with was, was average cost. So that would be a Monday through Friday from about 7:00 AM to about 6:00 PM.
Thank you very much. Thanks.
Alder Kimball.
Yeah, on one of your slides, you talked about needing to develop executive sponsorship and across organizational boundaries. Did you, I'm not quite clear on what you meant by that. Do you meant, did you mean within the city, across executive sponsorship of agency heads? Or between like the city and some other entity?
No, I think it's going to be that we're going to need both agency heads and policymakers to be executive sponsors to have this work. And this would be within the city of Madison at this point.
And do you feel, like, where do you feel is the gap there right now?
I think that what the, the gap is, is that we need to define what this roadmap is going to be. We don't have that roadmap because we haven't defined where we need to really focus our energies. What is phase one? Is phase one that we're just doing the public works agencies? Is phase one that we do public works and building inspection? Because there is such a close connection between those two. Is it that phase one is that we only take three agencies and try to move those forward? These are decisions that IT shouldn't be making. These are decisions that need to be across agencies. And also I believe policymakers need to be providing feedback and helping to figure out the direction moving forward.
Okay, thanks. That really helps. So you're really asking for guidance from us. And I think it's important to underline that and highlight that. So those of us who understand how important this is or, you know, in the next council should really, I think it should be a priority. One other question about the operational costs. So that was just, that wasn't work you did to say, oh, this will be in addition to our costs already because presumably we'd be using a lot, a lot of the staff in agencies, frontline staff, are people who basically do, you know, interface with the public all day long. And is there a way in which, you know, you can see us changing, changing some of those jobs or shifting some of the work to be 311 related?
So I feel like that is a real policy decision that's going to need to be made. When ICMA did it, they were looking at this is new personnel, new staff personnel. And just, just as a side note, I will be sending out the report to Lisa so that this can get attached to the minutes and she can share it with the CC. But it's all new staff. It was not making assumptions that we would be taking staff from city agencies because we feel that that needs to be a policy. So when we talk to ICMA, we just said to them, just identify how much staff, new staff would need to be hired.
Okay, thanks.
Alder Harrington McKenney.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just heard that she'll be sending out the report to Lisa. I wanted to look at the operational cost slide, but I can wait until I get the full document. Thank you.
Alder Foster.
Thank you. Yeah, it'd be interesting to look more detailed at it. Sarah, in terms of kind of bridging the gap between those recommendations that you put out. And so let's fast forward and say the direction that, that you hear from policymakers is this is a top priority. We want to move forward, you know, and we're, we're able to sort of define what that means, at least in, for in phase one. What would it, how can we get, how can we get something framed up to be able to get that policy direction? Really sort of like as part of this next budget cycle, for example, so that we have, you know, either here, here's one alternative or here's two alternatives of, or, you know, or do nothing in terms of moving this, this project forward is, do you need anything else to be able to kind of help frame that for, for us, the policymakers to be able to evaluate it as part of our, our upcoming budget discussions?
So, um, so I think that there's a couple of things for 2022 that we're looking at. One of the things that we would recommend is hiring a project manager because we need to start thinking about what systems do we need to, as I was saying, in the current state, there are still a lot of processes that need to be addressed as to what system they need to go into and helping to move that forward. There is also some policy decisions that I think are going to probably need to be made on, are these the systems, these three systems, the systems, SALA, City Works and Tyler? You know, are these the three systems that we are going to use? Or are we going to be looking at another system that needs to be implemented? So those are discussions that need to be had. That's what 2022 should be. That should be, let's lay the, the, the foundation. Let's get the scaffolding in place. And then in 2023, moving forward, we start talking about what does a CRM look like? But there's a lot of policy decisions that need to be made before we can really move forward. Because you want to know what the model is going to be before you put it into place. Let's not purchase a CRM. Let's not try to get that in place when we don't know what the staffing is going to be like. We don't know where this is going to be located because that's all very important parts of a successful CRM. And so we need to get those in place first. And I think we also need to talk about like, what agencies do we do first? I don't, I don't believe that we can do all of them at once. Because if we were, then this would be something that wouldn't get done for four or five years. We also need to look at, is IT currently today able to support the backend of this? Or do we need to look at the staffing for that as well? And what is that going to look like? So the answer, Alder Foster, is I don't think in 2022, we're going to be putting funding towards a CRM. I think in 2022, we are, we have a couple of budget requests that we are going to be putting forward for moving forward with the 311 CRM, a project manager. There's some software that we would like to, to look at for account management across all of our different platforms. So there's, we're building the building blocks, that foundation. And then in 2023, if we have some decisions from this executive sponsorship, then we can move forward with what that roadmap is going to look like. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think partly, yeah. And maybe, maybe one thing that would be helpful is, you know, we could, we could have some follow-up. But just you, you laid out some of those policy decisions that we're sort of going to need to wrestle with and make. And maybe that's something else that we should be focused on even, even this year yet to really maybe better define those and then start having those policy discussions. So that, you know, assuming we bring in a project manager, I think, I think we, you know, we could set that stage a little bit better perhaps than of here's, we've nailed down kind of what it is that we are saying when we say we want a 311 so that then the, the work can be a little bit more deliberate and, and really focusing on, okay, how do we operationalize the direction that we have? So maybe that's something that you could help support us in just understanding really specifically that these kinds of policy questions, so that, you know, and maybe that's CCC, you know, that takes that on over the, you know, the next nine months or something like that. So that would, that would be great. And then the other, I guess the other thing I'd just add is I think that there's, there's perhaps some opportunity and maybe we, maybe this should get folded into the common council's discussions around council staffing. But I wonder if there's also an opportunity to kind of have an, have an early version of something very, very basic and rudimentary, like, you know, using the council phone number and email address or website or something. And even if it's as basic as just helping, like, using the existing reporter problem system we have now, but having like a human being, a staff person on the city side, just, just be that sort of easy access point for residents. And basically in advance of having sort of a more sophisticated, really integrated system that I know you're, you know, you're focused on and all of the benefits that would come from that. Because it just, it still feels like, at least from my perspective, I mean, I, I think where all the Alders are getting so many residents that simply are getting stuck and don't know where to go. So even just having, having one place where people can go, even if it's not, you know, integrated with all these other systems, et cetera. If it's just literally someone doing the job of what Alders are doing today, which is asking where, where do I send this person and connecting them kind of manually? So that's, I'm kind of putting that out for my colleagues, I think, more than for you, Sarah. But we should think about how, you know, could we create something in the interim to at least be a sort of one-stop shop, even if it's not real sophisticated so that we can catch those people that are kind of falling through the cracks right now? Thanks for your presentation.
Sarah, I have a quick question for you. You mentioned two positions that you would like to see hired, obviously at the appropriate time. But what were those two positions? One was the coordinator. And what was the second?
So the first one is that the kind, the, so is the coordinator? And then the second one would be that project manager.
Project manager. And I think that you made a good point where you need to have these two people in place to set the foundation for everything else that's going to come in, whether, you know, new employees, et cetera. But these two positions need to be in place. You know, we've been, and I can only go as far back as when I came and I will depend on Alder Baddar to go back further. But 311 has been talked about for a long time. And this is really exciting that it's come to this where we can really see that it's going to be implemented relatively soon. And I know 2023 sounds far off, but relatively soon. Because I remember when I came in and we were talking about 311. So thank you so much for that presentation.
Alder Carter.
If you wanted to say we, a quick shout out to Alder Balday because it was his recommendation to put in the budget request for the
Absolutely. Shout out to Alder Barday officially. Thank you very much.
Alder Carter, you do have a registration on this item. Tom Settle registered neither support nor opposed and wishing to speak.
Thank you. And did you say wishing to speak?
That is correct.
Okay, is he on?
He is currently here.
Okay. Go ahead, Tom.
Hi. Can you hear me?
I sure can.
Okay. You know, my name is Tom Settle. I'm a partner with Permont Development. We're multifamily developers. And while we develop affordable housing, which does include homeless, SRO housing, in the case of East Town, we represent a group who plans to invest with $35 million of our own money to develop some luxury apartments on a site on the perimeter of the mall adjacent to the proposed homeless shelter. You know, there was a, there was an article in the newspaper last week. And this headline said developer threatens. Earlier in the week, I sat in on a, which I found a little harsh. I sat in on a Zoom meeting that Alder Balday sponsored. And it wasn't my intention to speak. There were plenty of East Town residents and business owners and, you know, speaking, speaking of the economic casualties that the, locating the shelter in that location would trigger. And as the meeting wound up, I decided it was, you know, time to be counted as one of those casualties or for a whole mic piece. And I, and I spoke up not to threaten, but just to state our reality, not anybody else's. And I realized, you know, I think I read in the newspaper where the mayor was cited as saying, you know, I don't know how realistic it is, meaning our project. And that's true. You guys don't. But every, you know, everything, even a homeless shelter starts with a dream. We're dreamers, but we're also doers, or our record will show that.
Thomas, did you sign up for item eight?
I'm sorry. I signed up for item nine.
Okay.
I thought you were there.
He registered for agenda item number six, which is
Oh, I did? Well, you know, it's upside down. Is that dyslexia?
Because we're going to be discussing that at the common council meeting, but
Okay, I'm sorry. I thought the message was that this was the meeting.
Yeah, there was a motion at the beginning to, to have public comment at the council meeting.
Okay, so that's, that's later, right?
At 6:30.
Okay, well, I apologize for
No, no, not at all.
You listened to me twice.
Not at all, not at all.
And Alder Carter, just so you know, we do have a registration on agenda item number seven, Brad Guyer. We may want to check to make sure he's actually talking on PFAS and not homeless shelter.
Brad, you should have a pronce on mute yourself. There you go.
Okay, I'm a little confused. Am I supposed to, is this stuff from item seven moved also?
Item seven?
Yeah, do I, do you want me to speak now or do I speak at the?
PFAS, yes.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
I just wanted to say a few things about PFAS. Forever chemical pollution is seriously harmful. They interfere with development in human beings and can cause a variety of issues. The PFAS and other pollution around TruX and the airports are the most severe the closer you get to the airport. This is where the poor and people of color have some of the highest densities of population. As far as what's going on, we need as much transparency, oversight and citizen involvement as possible because the companies that manufacture these chemicals have big money. The federal government also wields a lot of power. Either of these entities often do as they please without being properly regulated or held accountable. Locally here, we have organized business entities also, which tend to get more representation than us human beings. Things like the WMC and the Chamber show in their actions that they want as little regulation as possible, which shows blatant disregard for our community and for the safety of kids. From the bigger picture, if you take a look at the Superfund sites around the country, little is being done to protect people from all those chemicals. And those are designated to be little is being done to protect people from all those chemicals and those are designated to be some of the most polluted areas that we have. The Environmental Working Group has a map of over 700 sites, which are just military sites with known and suspected PFAS pollution. Sorry.
Go on.
Yeah, I had to scroll. I'm not quite an expert at this Zoom stuff yet. I believe that regardless of the rules and regulations that the US military will continue to use the poisonous foam on their aircraft because it's made of a composite material that burns at a high temperature. I also believe they will continue to use these poisons to spray on their aircraft for stealth capabilities. The Air Force State has, Air Force has stated that they will not follow regulations in other states such as Michigan, and I do not believe the Air Force is working with various governmental entities to protect us from their poison. I say all this having been a Air Force veteran and an Air National Guard veteran both. So how is it that the military is moving forward with construction here in Madison? When we have so many unanswered questions about how they're going to clean up their mess and how to not make things worse. This is our land, our water, our people, and water is life. Thank you.
Thank you. And is, is Christie, Christine? There she is.
Hello.
Hello. And thank you for, for coming tonight.
Sure, my pleasure. So let me start by saying I, I came, I, I know you're interested in continual updates about the PFAS remediation work happening at the TruX National Guard site in the airport. And I had tried to bring some speakers with me from the county and from the Air National Guard to, to provide these updates. And unfortunately, you are left with just me tonight. I did have two speakers from the Air National Guard who were able to speak to the remedial investigation that they're doing. And any construction related to F-35s and what PFAS standards would be expected there. And unfortunately, they had a last minute cancellation and they weren't able to attend, but did say they would be happy to come to a future meeting. So I'm sorry, they're not here with me today. I also invited folks from the county, from the DCRAs, so Dane County Regional Airport to join as their lead on the cleanup of, of the airport, which we are participating in and contributing funding to, but we, it's their site, it's their consultants, it's their, their, their lead on that. So I invited them as well, and they were not able to attend. So I, I know you're very anxious for updates there and I, I don't, I'm, I'm sorry to say that I don't really have an update beyond what I shared two weeks ago. So as you all know, and as we spoke to in the briefing at your last meeting, the Department of Natural Resources has asked us to, us meaning the, the county, regional airport, the city and the Air National Guard to, in addition to our continued investigation and remediation work, make and submit a plan by April 16th of how to stop PFAS from entering Struck Weather Creek in an interim basis in the meantime. And unfortunately, I'm just not, I'm not in a position to share more there. That's, as I said, the county is, is working on that and we just unfortunately don't have a confirmed direction there yet. So I, that's still something that is being planned for submittal by April 16th, but, but it's not something I have, have to share today. I wish I did because I know you're anxious to hear it. So aside from that, which is a little briefer than I had meant for it to be and hoped to it to be after our last minute cancellations, I can also share just related notes that may be of interest. The Water Utility is, has been looking at what, basically what to do with well 15. So as you know, well 15 is the well that is, is near the TruX Guard base and has shown higher levels of PFAS contamination. And that has been turned off and taken offline for the last couple of years. They have been thinking about ways to essentially replace that water, which of course could include looking for new sources of water and could include treating that water to remove the PFAS from it. So they've been conducting a study of, of whether treat, whether treatment is a realistic option. And they are still in the process of finalizing this. They are presenting the results of their water board meeting on April 27th. But I, I think the hot, one of the two questions was, is this, is this really feasible and is it possible? And that answer is yes. They activated carbon is something that would work. It would work at the high volume per minute that they need to be achieving to be using it in a municipal well. So that is possible. The, the, it, the activated carbon would need to be replaced pretty frequently. So there are the costs and, and maintenance needs associated with that. So I don't think they're at a point of thinking it's a no brainer solution to treat well 15 versus other options for replacing that water. I think they expect to be able to speak to that more concretely by the time they are at their water utility board meeting on April 27th. But I wanted to let you know that that, that work is continuing to progress. And I, that's, that's really the majority of what I have today. I did hear the speaker talk about phones and just want to remind everybody that we did a little over a year ago replace all of our firefighting phones with phones that do not include PFAS. So that step is taken. I know the Air National Guard still does use those phones by federal requirement. Only however, they used to use them for training and testing and active fires. At this point, they would only be used for active fires, not for training or testing, although they, they are still what they are required to use through federal standard for, for an active oil-based fire. So yeah, like I said, that plan is still due April 16th. And while I'm sorry not to be able to, to bring you more information on that today, I'd be more than happy to come back to you in this meeting.
Thank you so much. Are there any questions for Christie? Alder Abbas?
Thank you very much. And thank you for joining. I know you're on vacation. So I appreciate that.
Wallpaper removal vacation. It's not the most luxurious of vacations.
So one quick question about the Water Utility and well 15. Do we know how much it will cost to clean that, the water system? I remember in public meeting, years ago, one and a half, two years ago, they mentioned about in millions. So I'm just curious if you have any, any, any idea on ballpark?
So I think those are the numbers that they're trying to refine and that they hope to be able to, I think they do expect to be able to share those on April 27. And I think there, there's a couple of components. Well, there's three components of cost. One, there's the treatment system itself. Two, I don't remember exactly why, but they need to build a building around it. So it's not something they can have out in the air. So they need to construct a building around it. So that's the second part of the cost. And then the third part, part is just the annual operating cost of purchasing new medium, which is the activated carbon and disposing of, of the used medium and just the, of the personnel costs that go along with that as well. Yeah, I, I don't, I'm not sure if they're coming in right where, right where they were projecting. They're at, I recall with the meeting you're talking about and I don't, I, I'm not sure if they're coming in right there or not, but I know those are the three major cost components that they're looking at.
And do we know, and I, we, you know, we can get more information April 27th, but I'm just curious, do we know who's going to pay that cost? City, county, taxpayer?
I, I would imagine that that would be the Water Utility. And that, that's, I will tell you, that's my gut instinct logic. Somebody could come to me tomorrow and say, no, this would be a capital expense paid back by the general fund and they would explain why. And that might be news to me. My gut instinct now is that would be a Water Utility rate payer funded capital cost.
And one last thing about April 16th. I know County and Angie and you, you are working together. I'm also curious to know how often you guys talk and when you're going to plan to talk again, because the date is coming really soon and we're not going to have CCC meeting. So I'm just curious for community knowledge. What are the next steps?
We have generally been meeting a little more frequently than once a month. I perhaps twice a month, but I'm not sure. And so we have, we have been talking, but you know, they're at a point of they've, they've had some ideas and some interests that they're pursuing, but they're still in the process of ask, asking and answering questions. And I, so, which means they haven't settled and directions and thoughts could change. And so I'm just not in a position to speak to where they're at in that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Alder Abbas. Thank you, Christie. And we'll move on to referrals. Number eight. Alder Furman, will you be speaking to this? Go ahead.
Thank you, Council President. I, the creation of this task force came out of the fact that both the Digital Technology Committee and the Education Committee are, were both talking about digital inclusion strategies. We does budget money towards digital inclusion every year. That would be a good idea to get together a group of individuals, both Alders, some people, an individual like from the county, school board and, and library to talk about and, and, and get a better map of.
Can greatly benefit the task force. So just a friendly suggestion, if there is something you're open to, you know, add.
And thank you, Alder Abbas. I have a quick question for you, Alder Furman. I remember committee that was looking at expanding internet services to those areas that don't have it at currently. A few years back, it was doing the, the term of the previous Director of IT. Is this piggybacking on what they started?
Over $150 million. And the digital techn- at this point has really